First. I am now calling our public work session to order. In accordance with Governor Ralph Northam's Declaration of a State of Emergency Due to the Novil Coronavirus Executive Order 51. On March 12, 2020 and the local declaration of emergency present in the city council chamber in order to reduce the likely spread of coronavirus in accordance with city council ordinance 2020-21 and 2020-102. Each city council member is participating from their home or other remote location, and I am in the city council chamber. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
President.
Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Ms. Lucas Burke.
Okay. Mr. Moody.
Here.
Dr. Whitaker. Dr. Whitaker. Mr. Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Glover.
Here.
If everyone could please turn on their cameras. Including staff.
Mr. Pace, would you please proceed with your items, sir?
Sure. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, good evening. Per your request for a report back relative to retirees supplements and HRA information, Ms. Mimi Terry, Chief Information Officer is here to provide a presentation for you at this time. Ms. Terry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, executive staff, enforcement of community. I would like to begin my presentation. Is Deborah gonna put it on so everybody can view it?
Meg Pittinger is gonna put it on.
Okay. So this, in the meantime, so it's the report back for the retirement supplements and the health reimbursement agreement, which is our HRA. And I'll get into the supplement or the bonus first.
Oh, members, hold on for one moment. I think that Ms. Pittinger is trying to find the presentation to upload it. As soon as she does, we'll be ready to go. Mr. Terry is coming.
I'm fine, I'm fine. I didn't know she wanted me to send it back to her or...
No, she's...
Okay.
I went to send it to her, I guess.
Okay. No problemo.
Yes. Ms. White is coming back now, so maybe she has it already.
Okay. No problem.
Please bear with us, folks, we're almost there.
Still have to hit the edit. Enable editing button at the top. Cooking with gas now. What happened? There we go. Thank you. Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. So I am, I've been charged to bring this presentation to, back to council regarding a one-time supplement that is, has been requested. Next slide, please. So as a reminder, we have three retirement systems. Right now, fire and police, F and P is when I refer to that. Portsmouth Supplemental, PSRS, are the two retirement supplement, the two retirement systems that we have along with VRS. A council has requested a, in the previous meeting, to give a one-time supplement in the amount of $1,500 to retirees in the Portsmouth Fire and Police as well as the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System Plan, effective July 1, 2021. I think Councilman Moody requested to know what it would be if we did it or split it up. So what I did is I considered the whole fiscal year of 21, regardless of the split, that amount would be the same. Next slide, please. So the cost of the supplement to the city, the annual supplement, I will say, because it would be during that one fiscal year. Fire and police system has 620 retirees. The supplemental retirement system has 339, with a total number of retirees of 959. As you can see, if you recall from the last meeting, we had a few more retirees from the last time that we presented or requested a $1,500 supplement. Unfortunately, we've lost about 20 of our retirees in death. So total cost estimate at 1,500 per payment would be $1.4 million. So that's 930,000 for the first system, which is F and P, and then 508,500 for the Portsmouth Supplemental. Administrative project work, it'll be about $1,500, which is 750 per plan. Fees for producing and mailing the communications to the retirees is about $1,900, with a grant that the retirees get or how much they have received in their monthly retirement benefit. So I thought it would please council to provide exactly what that looks like on an average scale between both systems. So when we look at fire and police retirement system, we pay over $1.7 million. It's spent in benefits each month for the system, with the average benefit of $2,829 to the participant, but that does not include the bonuses that we've been able to give of 1,500. So that's their average salary that they get, or would you say retirement benefit that they receive on behalf of this, on behalf or from the city through John Hancock. Plan participants include fire, police, fire, rescue, and EMS in the fire and police retirement system. For the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System, we pay $615,566 a month in monthly benefits, with the average benefit of $1,805. Again, that does not include the bonus that they receive that we actually give for the $1,500. The plan participants vary over different departments throughout the city. Next slide, please. Again, I wanted to provide some additional information, because first I know that we have a new council, we have people who are really not as familiar with the retirement systems that we have. So this is just giving them a few more nuggets of background. So for the fire and police and the Portsmouth Supplemental System, members retiring on or after the July 1, 1992, but before July 1, 1993, receive an additional allowance equal to monthly payments of $100 from date of retirement until the retiree turns 62 or their 62nd birthday. A member retiring on or after July 1, 1993 will receive or has received an allowance equal to monthly payments of $200 from the date of retirement until the retiree's 62nd birthday. A member retiring on or after July 1, 1994, which is clearly after, will receive an allowance equal to monthly payments of $200 from the date of retirement until the retiree turns 65 years old. Again, this is just some additional information for the new council members that we have, so that they are aware of the cost to the city as well as what the benefit is that the retirees receive up to their birth dates of 62 or 65 years old. Next slide, please. That covers the $1,500 benefit or supplement that we would like to provide, one-time supplement. So, Mr. Pace, would you like me to ask questions now or continue on through the presentation? You're muted. You're...
I'm sorry. Whatever the pleasure of council is, if you'd like to, Ms. Terry, to entertain questions now before going to the HRA? Yes? Mayor?
Are there any, are there any questions from my colleagues on council regarding the information thus far?
Mayor, I have my hand up.
Mr. Moody, you have the floor, sir. Councilmember Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have a question, but I think it's, I think some of us who've been on council for a while remember this, where the, when the retirees agreed to come off the city's health plan back in late 2014, that their action actually reduced the OPEB liability by $149 million. And it also reduced the annual ARC by about $13 million a year. And I say this because many times when we talking about expenses, we talk about reoccurring expenses, but savings can also be reoccurring, and their action back then is still to a benefit of the city. Granted, it did save them some on their health insurance premiums, but the savings to the city was substantial at that time. I think it's just important, it's very important for us not to forget that. So, and that's why I'm an advocate of the $1,500. Now, we know City Manager Patton made it, the HRA now is in perpetuity, where they don't have to come back and worry about that, but this $1,500, especially during this pandemic that we're in, is extremely important. Not all of our retirees retired at substantial salaries. So I'm still very supportive of the $1,500. You know, we can, we can break it up into two payments, one in July, one towards the end of the year, but I'm an advocate of approving the $1,500.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Moody. Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Terry, they, you mentioned that the supplemental covered 36 departments, so that those are retirees from positions other than fire and police as well?
Correct. So what I wanted to be able to stress that, the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System consists of everyone who was not in the fire and police, who did not do public safety. So the Portsmouth Fire and Police are for the public safety officers, and the Portsmouth Supplemental was for everyone else across the board, across all departments. But again, we also have the Virginia Retirement System that covers both. But I know that this was only for the Portsmouth Supplemental and Fire, that the $1,500 would be allowed allotted to.
Okay.
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, Ms. Terry.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Terry, so am I hearing you correctly? So the fire and police, they also receive the Virginia Retirement Pay as well?
Um, no, so in 1987, if you, do you mind if, does it please the council to allow me to give some history, just because we have new people on council who may not be as familiar with the retirement systems that we currently have?
Yes, please.
Okay. So there are three retirement systems with the city of Portsmouth. You have the fire and police, which are your public safety. You have Portsmouth Supplemental, which cover everyone else, and then you have the Virginia Retirement System. To support what Councilman Moody did say, at one point, there was a time where the city paid about, was paying about $219 million in benefits through our retirement system that was really crippling the city's financial position. So what they did in 1987, I believe, or 83, they decided to go with Virginia Retirement System. However, the employees were allowed to be grandfathered into the Portsmouth Supplemental on the Portsmouth Retirement System. So they did not have to opt into the Virginia Retirement System, they were actually allowed to stay with the old system. Also, as a reminder, that the city used to pay 100% of retirement into all systems, where that means that the employee was not required to pay a contribution into the retirement system. In 2012, the Virginia Retirement System, which is mandated pretty much by the state, says the employees were now required to pay a contribution into, or invest in themselves into the retirement system. So if you, the council will recall, their council decided to allow them into a sliding percentage. So the first year was 1%, 2%, 3%, until they maxed at the mandated requirement of 5%. So with that being said, Virginia Retirement System employees with the city are required to pay into the retirement system of 5%, where the Portsmouth Supplemental and Portsmouth Fire and Police were not required to pay a contribution. So they're 100% funded by the city. Now, I'm sorry, Dr. Whitaker, to your question, we do have, when that transition happened, we do have employees who transitioned that were still fire employees into the Virginia Retirement System. And then you have the ones who were grandfathered in who decided not to go and move into the new retirement system, because that was dumb. And the police and fire retirement system are not 100% funded. So which means we've had to take out pension bonds in order to catch up the system and fund the system, and we also have to pay into what we call, we made an arrangement or an agreement to pay into the system as often as possible, because it would, it's not 100% funded, or even 80% funded, which is what's, what the goal is, so that we can, so the retirees won't have to worry about, will we have enough money to fund the system? So if that's breaking it down.
Well, I just, two things. So for the fire and police, that was 100% funded by the city? You said up to 2012?
That was, so retirement for the VRS was 100% funded up to 2012, where the state mandate said we had to pay into it.
Okay.
Portsmouth Supplemental and Portsmouth Fire is still 100%. They don't pay into it. So they don't, there's no employee contribution.
So there was no employee contributions made by them while they were working? Like a normal retirement where you pay, where some of your pay goes into the retirement, and then the employer pays some into it?
Correct.
So for, for the fire and police, there was no contribution requirement the whole time while they were working?
Correct.
Okay. Is that for the Portsmouth Supplemental as well?
Correct.
Okay. And, and then, in sometime after 2012, I think I've heard this mission before, that's where the city went out and took out a bond to pay into these retirement accounts to bring them up to the necessary standard?
Well, we still aren't at the necessary standard. We're still trying to catch up.
Right.
We are, we are paying into that until the very last soul is in it. And we have about 20 or so employees who are within the city now, still pay, you know, we, they're not retired yet, as still part of that system.
Okay. And once again, and those, that bond funding, whatever source of that funding, that was paid into which retirements?
The pension liability bonds were done for the Portsmouth Supplemental and the police and fire retirement systems to fund it. It wasn't, it wasn't enough to fund it at 100% or even 80. So, but that, those dollars went into funding that system.
Okay. All right. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Battle, go ahead, sir.
The biggest problem that we have with our retirement system are the folk that we have investing the monies. We have three layers of payouts for those folk that are in charge of inhaling the pension fund and doing the investments. It's basically an outdated approach that they are taking. The newer approaches in the last 10 to 15 years has been, when we make money, they make money. But this particular retirement system, we're losing about $1.2 million for the three layers of investors every three months or four months. I think it's three months. So, yes, we can look at the things we're looking at and try to mandate everything, but until we approach the real problem, we're gonna constantly lose money in that retirement system, because again, it's an outdated approach. I've mentioned this two years ago, I mentioned it one year ago, and I'll mention it again. That is the problem with the retirement system. And again, we're gonna continue to lose money until we get a more fairer investment group.
Thank you, Mr. Battle. Ms. Terry, you have the floor.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'm not quite sure what Councilman Battle referred to as three layers of investors, but what I will say is, within what, how we invest our money is through a third party. But I'm not sure what the three layers are, because that goes to different investors who invest our money. On the last presentation that the investment group made, which was Greystone, they, they shared, or we have the information documented, and we have the investment statements, that the actual statement, they made $34 million, and we paid out in benefits 29 million to our retirees. So I'm not quite sure of what we're referring to, but I do know that the investment group, it costs to invest. This was within the last 10 years, we've actually seen an upward swing, and how much money the investment is. And just as a reminder, those dollars are always reinvested back into the retirement system. So for the dollars that we make, fortunately, it did not deplete the retirement system within that year. So if they made 39, we paid out 29. So fortunately, that additional money was reinvested into the retirement system. So it's been...
So let me...
Thank you. Yes, sir.
So let me...
Okay, Mr. Battle, you have the floor, sir.
So let me explain to you. What is happening, we started out at a 78% or 79% solvency, once we made the last bond revenue purchases, that was, I think, when Mr. Whitaker was here. And since then, we're only about 69% sovereign. So we've been losing money every year. Now, since I brought it to the attention of what was happening, they had to produce a better situation of what you are speaking about now. And that particular situation is only because I pulled the cover over what was happening. Now, with the 20, with the $34 million, we paid 29 out for the retirees, then all of the rest of the funding went to the investment people. So this is what I'm trying to say to you. And this is why they became so astute and paid more attention to what they were doing and made better investments.
Thank you.
At this time.
Thank you, Mr. Battle. Thank you, Mr. Battle. Thank, thank you. One, one of the things I would, hold on, one of the things I would like to add is as, as, as a part of our charge as council members, um, and our responsibility, uh, previous councils did shore up this retirement that was reaching insolvency. And, and certainly we're appreciative of, of that. As we sit here today, um, when, 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 when the council a couple of years ago passed a resolution that we would not, that we would not entertain paying out any other dollars from this retirement plan until we had reached the eighty percent, the eighty percent benchmark that we needed to have to ensure financial solvency. Why is that important? It is important because the folks that are currently receiving dollars from these funds that are actively in the system, um, they need to receive those dollars as they're needed. And we need to ensure that they are there and available until the last participant receives their money. That is our charge. And so all of this other secondary stuff, although it is, it is probably germane and important to the conversation, that is where we are in this process. And so we need to ensure as a council that all of the participants that are currently in the police and fire and the supplemental system are able to get those dollars that were promised to them in that defined benefit program um, until the last one is, is paid. Councilmember Moody.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. You're absolutely right. I think, uh, the dereliction of our duty if we didn't do that. But I want to make it clear to those listening that this fifteen hundred dollars doesn't come from the retirement system. It comes from the general fund. Just want to draw that.
Uh, it was a two thousand eight hundred twenty-nine dollar a month, a month, yeah, okay. So, so can you explain this again? What, what this is, um, that two thousand eight twenty-nine, that's the, okay, I see, that's the average uh, monthly benefit that persons are receiving. Okay, okay, I guess. I'm, I'm fine. I see now.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. I do have a, uh, a, uh, Mr. Page.
Are we ready to go to the A terrain?
Yeah.
Please proceed.
Okay. Next slide, please. So this, uh, presentation is regarding the health retire, I'm sorry, HRA, the Health Reimbursement Agreement. So the way I decided to put this presentation, because it was more of a question and answer for those who are not familiar with the Health Retirement Re- Reimb- the Health Reimbursement Agreement, HRA as we always hear it. And basically, I wanted to put this together so that it could be a question and answer, but everybody could become familiar with what it was. So let's start. How many retirement plans does the city have? I think we just covered that, but I just wanted to go back through it so that we, uh, all understand. It's the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System, which is a closed plan. Closed plan meaning it's an existing plan, but no new employees can join this retirement system. Fire and Police Retirement Plan is a closed plan as well. The active plan that we have for the city is the Virginia Retirement System. So that I'm clear, there are three retirement systems with the city of Portsmouth. Closed means that anybody that are in those closed systems have been grandfathered in and they're not open to any new employees. The Virginia Retirement System is our active plan for new employees to become a part of that retirement system when they join the city of Portsmouth. Next slide. What is the HRA? HRA is a Health Reimbursement Agreement, known as HRA. The city council approved this health insurance supplement plan, which became effective on April first, twenty fifteen. Next slide, please. What is meant by a supplemental health insurance? The city contributes, pays money to offset some of the health insurance costs for some, not all, of the retirees from the Portsmouth Fire and Police and the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement. Next slide. Who was eligible to receive the HRA supplement? Sixty-five years and, or older retirees in the Fire and Police and Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement Plans that were Medicare eligible. This benefit was not extended to the sixty-five-year and older retirees in the Virginia Retirement System. So that I'm clear on this. If you were sixty-five and older, you were eligible to receive this plan. To what Councilmember Moody wanted to identify is that it did save the city millions of dollars for the retirees to come off of the health insurance for the city. What I think people needed to understand is that you could still stay on the city's health insurance if you were sixty-five years and older and you, even your spouse. So, next slide, please. Does the city pay health insurance for retirees? Employees who retire from the city can continue to receive health insurance benefits under the city's health insurance plan until they reach the age of sixty-five and become Medicare eligible. At one time, you could stay on the sh- city's health insurance plan post-sixty-five, as well as your spouse. Okay? The insurance rates for the retirees nationally are higher because they're a no, they are no longer considered employees. What I mean by that is, the health insurance has two groups. You have your active employees and you have your retirees who have opt to continue health insurance until they reach the age of sixty-five. So there is a higher rate, it's about an eighty-twenty, where the retiree pays about eighty percent of the premium cost of the insurance and the city is still covered or pays twenty percent of that rate.
Ms. Terry, Ms. Terry, Ms. Mr. Mayor.
Whitaker, you have the floor, sir.
Is it okay, is it okay if we ask a question midstream or you want to wait?
You're asking, it's whatever the council desires if you're asking me, but whatever.
I, I think it's fine to ask questions as we go along because it's, it's probably relative to what the, 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 the information you're covering at that point. So I, I would agree that we can ask questions, yes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ms. Terry, can you go back to the previous screen? Okay, so, um, the employees sixty-five years or older under the Fire and Police in Portsmouth, um, Supplemental Plan, uh, were getting supplements paid?
Okay. So if you, if you don't mind, if I can explain. The HR, where can the best, do you mind if I give the, a small history so that we all can be on the same page?
Please. Yes, ma'am. Please proceed.
Okay. So at one point, the city paid health insurance beyond the age of sixty-five for all of their retirees. You could opt in to, that's why the liability to the city, when we mentioned OPEB liability, other post-employment benefits, you could still receive benefits from the city even after the age of sixty-five. After the age of sixty-five, you become Medicare eligible, Plan A, Part A, Part B, Part D, which reduces the, the, it gives you an ability to have health insurance after the age of sixty-five at a reduced rate under the government's plan. We were still allowing our employees or retirees to have health insurance. And it put the city on the hook for those dollars.
So, so are you saying that those who were sixty-five and older were get, were getting Medicare and another type of insurance that the city was supplementing?
Correct.
So, so, so Fire, Fire and Police and, um, the Portsmouth Supplement, not VRS, they, they were able to go out and get additional insurance that me- other than Medicare, in addition to Medicare, and the city was supplementing that?
Correct.
So.
That.
But that was, but, but, but that was not offered for persons who were under VRS?
Well, it was. The city was paying everyone's. It, it, it was, if you were in a retirement system for the city, you were able to stay on until after the age of sixty-five in receiving benefits or healthcare, what, healthcare, just at a higher rate.
So when it says the benefit was not extended to the sixty-five-year and older retirees in VRS, what, what is that saying then?
The bene- the benefit, so let me be, let me make sure.
Is that the supplement?
Supplement, correct. So the HRA supplement was only offered to the people that were in the Fire and Police and Supplemental Retirement Systems. It was never offered to the VRS sixty-five and older.
Right. Right, so. Yeah, so if someone who's in VRS, they're sixty-five and older and they go on Medicare and they go out and get additional health coverage, they were not getting a supplement to cover that additional health coverage.
Correct, because this HRA, I'm sorry.
Whereas, whereas the Fire and Police and PNS were-
Supplement and received that fourteen hundred dollars per year.
Council, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, did you have a question?
Yeah, yes, sir, I do. Uh, so, uh, the HRA, does that end after a person uh, reaches age sixty-five now? And actually, uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Burke, it begins at the age of sixty-five.
Okay, so, okay.
So, yeah, when you turn sixty-five, as long as you sign up for Medicare Part A or B, uh, Medicare, you are eligible to receive this supplement of fourteen hundred dollars if you opt in. And I think as we continue to go through the slides, they may also answer some questions as to who is in the system, how many, how many retirees we're talking about and what it actually costs the city every year.
Okay, okay, got it.
Thank you, Ms. Terry.
And I hope I answered the questions that you all were asking in the meantime.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, next slide, please. All right. And again, that was the one when they reached sixty-five. Okay. Why did the city offer this supplement? The supplemental health insurance benefit or for the expense of health insurance expenses was offered to reduce the city's health insurance liability and offset three medical, their retiree medical expenses. Next slide, please. And again, to Councilman Battle, it did save to what he said, it saved the city money to come off of those plans. But again, this supplement was only offered into up after post-sixty-five, after the retiree turns sixty-five. So how was the benefit determined? The annual deductible for, this is across the board, this is how HRAs are considered. The annual deductible for health plan coverage, medical expenses for active employees is about twenty-eight hundred dollars per individual. So that's the annual deductible. So in order to compute what is reasonable for offering the HRA or this additional supplement, it's fourteen hundred dollars, which is fifty percent, um, of what the twenty-eight hundred dollar average per individual for medical expenses deductible would be. So again, the average deductible for active employee at the highest health insurance plan is about twenty-eight hundred dollars. So to give, to make this equitable, fourteen hundred dollars was basically how the calculation came about to offer this HRA supplement, which was fifty percent of the high deductible per individual. Next slide, please. How many retirees are receiving the benefit? The city, the city currently covers three hundred and seventeen of the nine hundred and fifty-nine retirees that are in the F and P and PS system, Fire and Police and Portsmouth Supplemental. So right now, Fire and Police Retirement System is six hundred and twenty people and retire, Supplemental Retirement System has the three hundred and thirty-nine altogether, a total of nine hundred and fifty-nine, uh, retirees in those two systems with three hundred and seventeen of those retirees who opt in and are receiving the benefit.
So, so, Mr..
Yes, sir.
Mr. So, can you go back to the slide you were? So if you are on Medicare, then what is, and, and, and those in VRS aren't getting this supplement, then, then why is, why is there a supplement and a deductible issue if you're on Medicare?
No. So to clarify that, if you are, are before retired, remember they opt into this and it becomes available to them at sixty-five. In order to give some clarification as why they picked fourteen hundred dollars versus three hundred dollars, how come they gave a supplement of fourteen hundred and not five hundred? I think the logic to, to come up with a determination of fourteen hundred was they took the highest of any active deductible plan for an individual, which would be twenty-eight hundred dollars. So for instance, right now, the city, as an employee, my deductible, if I had either point of service, HMO or whatever, each plan, whether it's individual or family, the highest deductible for me would be twenty-eight hundred dollars as an employee with the city of Portsmouth. So just for equitable purposes, they said, okay, we have the highest deductible is twenty-eight, to be fair, because we're offering this HRA. It's about fifty percent, which is fourteen hundred dollars of the highest deductible. Because this supplement is not required, that's something that the city offered to give, maybe as an olive branch for allowing them to come off the health insurance. Save money here, gonna save money there. So fourteen hundred dollars was just based on a calculation to determine what was fair and equitable for those people who came off the health insurance plan and what we could offer them, if that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I guess I'm just not clear why certain employees were, who were on Medicare, only a certain number of employees were offered this supplement where they could go out and get another insurance policy and the city was paying for it. That's, that's what, that's what I don't, I'm not following, how that's equitable.
What I will say, Dr. Whitaker, it was, is my responsibility to give you the information.
Right, right. I agree. I, I, I actually think out loud, I, I, that was a question, yeah.
Uh, Council, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you have a question?
Yes, yes, sir, thank you. Uh, I guess my question is, is so if the city offered a high deduction um, plan, then what is the cost savings of the retirees who came off the higher, high deductible plan? And where did that money go? Did that stay in the retirement system or did that go to the general fund?
That, so any, at the time, the savings to the city was considered a long-term savings. So there was no right now, sir, savings. That is, over the course of, if we continued on the route or the, the way we were, it would have cost the city millions- It would have cost the city millions of dollars and it would have been near to impossible to fund the retirement system. So we look, I didn't look, but what the purpose of this exercise was. To save the city money in the long run. So, based on what information that I have. And was able to back, and I, I, and it's interesting that you say that, because I went back to, to an article that was in the Virginia Pilot. Uh, that mentioned when the city was transitioning with this. That the savings that it would get, as long as they, they can, if they continued on that route, it was gonna cost the city. Uh, two hundred and nineteen million dollars. But if they went and start cutting the, the retirees off. At sixty-five, it was gonna save, the savings would be about three hundred and some million dollars. Because it went from two nineteen to forty.
Miss, Miss, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, is that, are you still there?
Just trying to see how, you know, if there was a savings, you know, where'd the money go to and, and if that was applied back to the general fund. I mean, I guess it just was money that the city kept, uh, I mean, it didn't go, go back to the.
Uh, my apologies, Councilwoman Burke, it was a forecasted savings, if that's fair. It's a forecasted savings, but we were not headed in a good direction. Because the city could not sustain that type of liability. Moving forward to be able to continue to pay and ensure that our retirees. Uh, the funds were available to the retirees until the last retiree standing, if that's fair.
Yeah. Miss, Miss, looking at the age of their employees, people were getting older, right? And so, older people cost more from a medical standpoint. And so Medicare was traditionally put in place to take care of those who are sixty-five or older. You pay into Medicare, it's taken out of your check. So that's the healthcare for sixty-five and older. Municipalities began transitioning, transitioning away from paying for sixty-five or older. Because it was just too expensive and it wasn't sustainable. In that situation, a person that is sixty-five or older could stay on the group plan. On the, on the, on the municipal plan. They would still pay their share and the city would pay their share. But it was ultimately costing both too much money. So that's part of the reason. Why municipalities began to transition away from that. I think what we did in Portsmouth. As Miss Terry stated, as an olive branch to the seniors. Uh, to help them with their healthcare costs of Medicare, you don't pay for part A. Part B you pay for, and then you can either pick up a supplement. Or you can pick up a part C, which is Medicare Advantage Plan and a prescription drug plan, which is part D. So, all of those things became available to the seniors and as a result of the costs that they would incur. The city probably decided that we want to help these folks because we're also saving substantial money. By getting these seniors transitioned off of our health plan. However, it's just like anything else, when you save on one end. You know you have an obligation on another generally. So, that is part of my understanding, I just wanted to share that. And if I'm, I'm off base, Miss Terry, please correct me.
Perfect, actually.
Well, I, I do have a follow-up question. Um, how did the city determine? Who these particular employees would be to get that type of benefit? So, of the three hundred, of the three hundred and seventeen, uh, not tonight, but at a, at our next public work session. Can, can you let us know who are these three hundred and seventeen? What are their positions, what are the salaries they were retiring with? Um, because it seems like. Unless I'm missing something, it just seems like there's some inequity there.
Yes, sir. I have that information with no problem. And again, they were allowed the opportunity to opt. Into that plan. So everyone, it was extended to all fire and police at that time, if you were close to turning. Sixty, uh, with pre-sixty-five, um, it was just extended to them and they. Opt in. But yes, sir, I will make sure that you receive that information through the city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, do you mind, Miss, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I continue?
Mr. Mayor. Are we taking? Mayor? May I before she finish?
I, I can't hear you, sir, can you speak up, please?
May I before she finishes?
Yes, yes, you have the floor, Councilmember Battle.
Uh, Mr. Whitaker, what was played, uh, with that program is called political football. However, nothing's wrong with taking care of our seniors. It's when you get a group of, uh, the population that, uh, uh, folk who vote. And you'll offer only the carrot to them. To help you to become re-elected, uh, in the next election. And that's, that's the kind of games that are played. You take one portion of the population that we service. And give them something and then don't give the other one the same benefit. So it's called political football. Now they knew it wouldn't.
Thank Mr. Battle, Mr. Battle, um, that's, that, that is not relevant to the, to, to the, the matter. That we're discussing, sir, and I would have to ask respectfully that, 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 that you in that part. And unless you have something else that is germane to the issue, we need to move on, sir.
Well, I think it's very, very pertinent because we need to understand. Why things happen. So, when they, uh, uh, reoccurring that we can stand up. And, uh, make them right.
Thank you, sir. Miss Terry, would you please continue?
Yes, sir. Next slide, please. How much does the city pay for the H R A supplement? The city pays four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars per year to cover these three hundred and seventeen. Retirees for the H R A supplement. Next slide, please. What does the H R A supplement cost? So I did this because currently at fourteen hundred dollars per retiree. The city pays four hundred and forty-three eight hundred per year. If we determine that an increase of four hundred dollars is pretty much while we're doing this presentation occurs. The city will then be responsible for five hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred per year. Which equates to an increase of a hundred and twenty-six eight hundred per year for this. H R A supplement for the three hundred and seventeen retirees that it covers. Next slide, please.
Miss Terry, I do have a question. Um, what, what do other localities do? What are best practices? In this regard, are, 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 are we following best practices? Or, or help me understand what, what, what the best practices are in this particular area.
So based on the last, uh, piece of information that I had when they pulled this plan together. We are pretty much one of the only, if few or only localities that offer this supplement.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Are there any other questions for Miss Terry?
I have a question, yeah.
Okay, Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
So, for, for clarification purposes, that the, um, the extra money that we're asking for. What that's being asked for only goes to those three hundred and seventeen?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And if you, if I may, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am, please.
This is a caveat to that. If you are in the plan, well, if you receive this supplement. And you're, as the retiree, you, you now are no longer, you are deceased. The balance of what you receive in that fourteen hundred dollars goes to your spouse or surviving. Spouse that's in that plan, well, not in that plan, but your surviving spouse. So, it. If you don't spend the fourteen hundred dollars within that year, it is also allowed to carry over.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. And thank you for that presentation. Mr. Pace?
I have to get accustomed to not muting after everything. Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. City Engineer James Wright, uh, will provide an engineering update, um, relative to projects that are going on in the city. And also he will recap information relative to the Churchon Bridge.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Um, next slide, please. So tonight I'll give you an overview of a number of engineering projects. Um, I'll pause at the end of each project update. Um, to allow you to ask questions on those specific projects and then also pause at the end for any additional questions. Next slide, please. So the first project is the Churchon Bridge replacement. Um, this is a project that has a majority of state funds on the project. Approximately sixty-two percent of the funds that are on this project come from the state. Um, this project is a replacement of a bridge that's at the end of its useful life. Um, and as a reminder, it's actually two bridges. The nineteen fifty bridge. Which we call the northbound lanes are the, uh, the bridge that's leaving south side, headed to Churchland. The nineteen seventy-four bridge, southbound lanes, is the bridge leaving Churchland, coming to south side. Um, this project involves a total replacement of the northbound lanes with the addition of a fourteen-foot. Um, separated multi-use path driving piles sometime later in this month. Um, with that, I'll take any questions about the project. Okay, um, next slide.
Uh, Councilmember Moody, you have a question? Um, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, got a question from Mr. Wright. Uh, thank you, Mayor. That, uh. Mr. Wright, the Jersey wall that's remaining, uh, there when you're, uh. Uh, northbound, it, is that substantial in case a car would, uh, hit that thing? Uh, you know, in the past, we had the rail in and the walkway. We, we had, you know, a couple of barriers. Now it's just the Jersey wall and a long fall to the water. Is that, uh, is, is that safe and is that substantial to take a hit from automobile?
If, if you're talking about the barrier between the two bridges, um, that's actually a reconstructed barrier. That's between the two bridges.
No, I'm talking about the, uh, if you're, if you're headed north. Uh, uh, the Jersey wall that's separating, uh, uh. You know, you and the, uh, a, a long fall down to the water now.
Yes, the same Jersey wall, similar Jersey wall that was there prior to, between the two bridges. Take you from going into the other bridge. It's a substantial wall, sir, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so it, it, it would take a hit from a car and be okay, okay. Thanks.
Mayor, I have one question.
Okay, Council, Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wright, uh, the, the difference between the years and the two bridges is about twenty-four years. So, uh, we're replacing the southbound, um, bridge nineteen seventy-four. Um, I mean, I can't imagine, I mean, we probably should have replaced the northbound bridge a long time ago, but they're both in need of the same. Amount of repair, even though they're twenty-five, twenty-four year difference in, um, their structure time.
No, ma'am. So the, the nineteen fifty bridge is the one, the northbound lanes is the one we're replacing. That is the bridge is at the end of its useful life. Um, it's got some components that are no longer allowed in. Uh, bridges by today's construction. So that is the bridge that is being replaced. Um, the southbound bridge has some, um, issues that need to be addressed. But that is the reason for the rehabilitation of the southbound lanes. And so, with rehabilitation, you'll get. Another anywhere from ten to twenty years service out of the bridge.
Okay, got it.
Are there any other questions from my colleagues? Please continue, sir.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, the Old Town Stormwater Pump Station. Um, originally this project was intended to address flooding on Dinwiddie Street. Um, there were several small interim projects that were put in place to try to, um, address these issues. Prior to twenty-ten. Around that time during the nor'easter, the city decided to take a multi-phase approach to address. Um, the overall flooding in this drainage basin. The first two projects, um. Were combined and that was the replacement of Crawford, Crawford Seawall, and actually the raising of Crawford Parkway. It also included, um, a reduction of lanes and replacement of tide gate on the Box Culvert. Um, right there in the corner, right there next to Swimming Point. Um, the location of this proposed pump station is at the vacant property, right there at three oh one Washington Street. Uh, the design is at approximately ninety percent. We got to that point. Uh, moving forward with the intention of using solely city funds on the project. But, um, an opportunity came along for us to apply for, uh, funding through an alternative source. We were successful with that application and we received a hazard mitigation grant for, um, seven point four five million. From FEMA, we're waiting on the actual, uh, grant award. That grant will allow us to construct the first two phases of the pump station. And, um, we hope to get that award soon and be in construction sometime towards the end of this year.
Great job, sir. Are there any questions? Continue, please, sir.
Next slide, please. Okay, the Portsmouth Seawall replacement. Um, this is actually the fourth phase. Um, of seawall replacement projects, the first place being that Crawford Seawall replacement. Um, area three, um, was the, was the third phase and that was the section right here. Um, adjacent to City Hall, down to High Street Inlet. The second phase with the phase, Admiral's Landing to the North Inlet. Um, the reason we're replacing this seawall is that it is also at the end of its useful life. Um, there are components of, they're failed, there are pieces, there are sections of that we have shut down, um. To, to await, to wait future projects. And even currently, if you look at the North Inlet. Uh, we removed all the decking and the wooden members, um, because they were not in good condition. Um, the seawall in and of itself provides slug protection and it supports residential business and recreational activity downtown. Um, we have a signed contract, um, we're anticipated to start this month. And it's gonna be about sixteen months to get through construction.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Please continue, sir.
Okay, next slide. Okay, the Downtown Stormwater Park, um, this is part of the Crawford Gateway Rehabilitation Strategy. Um, this is convert the parking lot at the Civic Center into an amenity. Uh, for all of the public and also to support redevelopment of downtown. Um, it'll provide stormwater management for the date, for the adjacent par, parcels. Um, it's gonna provide a natural link to the seawall and to water. It was prevented, presented to prior City Council. Um, there are three options. Um, it was presented to several citizens in a virtual setting. Um, it's presented to Planning Commission and to the annual meeting of all the boards and commissions. Um, the common themes for all three of the options that were shown. Um, Water Street becomes a pedestrian thoroughfare. Um, County Street is extended down to, um. Water Street, um, there are natural steps leading up from the park to the seawall. There is a recessed performance area. There's educational component and integrated stormwater management features. Um, after, um, leaving this open to the public, um, we. Um after um leaving this open to the public, um we finally uh selected option two, which utilizes open green space and underground detention to manage stormwater flows. Um we recently received a grant, a G three grant to continue to further uh the design and um right now the design is at sixty percent and based on what we've seen and some of our um recent efforts in getting grants and some of the things we've seen submitted by other communities, this is likely a a strong candidate for a grant for construction.
Thank you sir.
Mr. Wright.
Um uh Councilmember Whitaker, you you have the floor sir.
Mr. Wright, I have a question, since this is um all part of the waterfront redevelopment, um the design that we're looking at with the buildings that are present, um there ha- there hasn't been any type of RFP or um anything from many developers. This is a city conceptual design?
Yes sir, the the part in and of itself is the the only thing that's designed by the city. The buildings that are shown in the rendering are potentially what could go there at some future time. So there's no RFP, there's no design in place for those buildings, no sir.
Right, so so my 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 um issue with this is why why is the um city undertaking uh this cost or is this is all being covered by grant money?
Um the intent um from the the former administration and for former City Council was to use this as an economic development tool to 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 spur development along the corridor and along and and to support the Crawford Rehabilitation Strategy.
So so this in essence is providing the um the drainage system?
Yes, sir, for the future parcels that come in and redevelop on the waterfront.
But why would this, why would the city invest in in that when a develop, that would be a developer's cost?
Once again, it's a it's a it's a development incentive.
Do we do that for all of our development projects?
Um they've taken various forms throughout the year, um my time here demolition of buildings to prepare land for development and and other things that have been put in place. So um because there's no um specifically war chest like you have in some other cities, there's the city's taken on other ways to provide incentives for development. Um incentive zones, building demolitions.
Yeah.
Um and just now recently the Stormwater Park.
Yeah, I guess my question uh is to our council or um if we haven't put out any, we haven't put out an RFP, I think the only thing I remember was this unsolicited bid. Um if there's, if if there hasn't been an RFP put out to develop this so that other developers can come in and bid and give conceptual designs, I I'm I'm just not clear why we're incurring this cost at at this time. So I'm I'm just, I I guess I'd be for.
If I if if I can, if I can speak to to some of that matter, I don't know all of it, but I can give you an example, for example, we had properties on High Street that was owned by the city that had a br- old bread factory and some old buildings and we received funding from the state in grant funding to demolition those buildings on city-owned property that were an eyesore and the purpose of that demolition was to create an opportunity for it to be more attractive to developers. Uh that was a city decision, um it was it was looked at 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 what other localities and what was more profitable. We consulted with our Economic Development Department, so this would be in keeping with that same kind of understanding. Once again, this is conceptual, so there is nothing official about it. Um but in order to present some options and put on the street for what we desire, this is part of what what was decided.
Right, well no, it's it's more than conceptual because uh I I I'm saying from from uh an architectural standpoint, it may be conceptual, but I'm saying we're putting city funds into it and it's all seems to be tied in with this uh unsolicited bid that was submitted and now you have uh the city contributing to to drainage costs that a developer would have normally incurred. So I was just, I was just curious about that, um and I I think it's something that that council needs to really uh consider because it seems like those two things may have been tied together. The unsolicited bid and and the city incurring this uh drainage development that would have otherwise been incurred by the developer. It's 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 likely was given the developer an unnecessary incentive.
Okay, thank you sir for those comments. Mister Mister um Wright, are you ready to continue?
Yes sir.
Thank you sir.
I got a comment, a comment.
Okay, I I can't see your hand, I'm sorry, um who is it?
Uh this Councilmember Whiter.
Okay, Councilmember Whiter, go ahead sir, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you, yeah, I I think it's a little bit past some conceptual. Uh I I think in the previous slides, we were looking at, was looking at solutions for stormwater and um drainage problems. Now, I don't think we should be using funds if we not solving uh uh making any resolutions for those problems. But like I say, this is a whole render of of what could possibly be here with a whole park that, you know, possibly could be developed with some other uh design if we put an RFP out here. So you know, I think it's a little bit more than conceptual, um and and we.
Thank you, thank sir.
We need to watch out how we spending our funds going forward.
Okay, that's that's that that's a good point and we will consider that as as we go forward sir.
Okay, Moody, Councilmember Moody had a question.
Council Councilmember Moody, would, did you have your hand up? I I apologize because I can't see this screen, it's really little and so I can't really see your hand. So if you could help me by pushing the hand icon or or checking that on on your on your system, that may help me, that way I can see. So the Councilmember Moody, did you have a question sir?
Well, what I was gonna say, uh I don't recall the Stormwater Park being tied to any uh unsolicited bid. I think uh I think it was meant to do two things. One was to mitigate some of the flooding that occurs down there that would uh uh really discourage uh any development and also to make the area more aesthetically pleasing to attract development. I think that was the the rationale, it it actually went through a process. That's how we ended up with the current design. And uh I think uh uh I see that we've already received uh uh some grant money and and maybe more is uh forthcoming. So uh I certainly wouldn't be supportive of backing away from that. Uh I th- I think it would uh it would certainly help and enhance the development of the waterfront. That's all I have to say about it.
Um Councilwoman Lucas Burke, you 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 have the floor ma'am.
Thank you Mayor, uh I I was alluding to the same comments that uh uh when we looked at some of these projects on how we're gonna use some of the CIP funds, um this is nothing more than the Churchland Bridge and the seawall and it's actually what you're looking at is the back end of a portion of that that same seawall is still uh city-owned property, so even when we develop the front end of it, it's still going to be an incentive to anybody that we would in the future do an RFP with. Now, the unsolicited unsolicited bid went away when we decided that we were not gonna go forward with that. So anything that we do futuristic uh for the back end of this would be done by councils today and and forth on. Um and I think that, and I was gonna ask the question, the the thirty thousand dollar grant, um how did we receive that, I mean, um applauding uh that and I know we received a grant from the prior project as well. Uh so how do these grants come into play uh with our design, Mr. Wright?
So um there are numerous opportunities available for any number of types of projects that are out there. Um we're always keeping our eyes open as for grant opportunities and ability to leverage city funds, um because we are limited funding wise and so any project that fits into a criteria of a grant that we think we have a good shot of getting those funds, we go after with the intent of getting those grants and using those on those projects, whether it be design or construction.
Thank you.
Vice Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor sir.
Um I I think that the, well, in my opinion, the incentive is just the property itself is is a is a great property. So I I'm not sure that we that we need to put anything out there for people to get it, all we have to do is put the RFP out and I'm sure people will jump to to this property. But as far as already developing some of it so that um so to to encourage somebody to come, I don't think that's a good idea because when they come in and and win the RFP, they're gonna want to put, do something with it that they feel deemed profitable for them and also profitable for the city as well. So I'm thinking more, this property itself is an incentive, is 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 prime real estate. That won't make it um.
His hand.
Well, I concur with Vice Mayor Barnes, the the property itself is the incentive, the uh the seawall uh uh or whatnot where they've been, I mean, what was uh constructed in this conceptual design. It's uh it's 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 not uh incentive as well if we already doing things to uh correct the problems with the the pump from our last slide and also um the 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 Crawford project from the previous slide as well. Uh it's no problems that's going on down there, like it like Vice Mayor Barnes say, the property itself is the incentive and for us to put a concept out here, this will almost deter a a developer that's looking at it. If we, what we should do going forward is just put out an RFP if we are talking about it at this time. But um this right here is misleading and um it's something that we should watch going forward.
Thank you sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Dr. Whitaker, you have.
Um um we may want to revisit the um re- economic report that uh Dr. Cook from Old Dominion University. Um he, if I remember correctly, uh one of the things he mentioned in that report that when it comes to economic development of Portsmouth giving a incentives for developers really isn't necessary because they're gonna develop it regardless. And so um I think that's what the uh my fellow councilperson are saying and that that was believed undergirded by um research from Dr. Cook um when um was looking at economic development issues in Portsmouth. So all of these incentives, um the like like you said, the property itself is an incentive uh for someone that wants to come in and and develop. So I I think it's something we really need to discuss um, you know, at our next public work session where we can have a little more time to look into this.
Thank you sir, I think that's a good recommendation.
And answer the follow-up on on Dr. Cook's study.
Thank you sir, I think think that's a very good recommendation, Mr. Pace, you have that? Thank you sir.
Mayor, I I've I've got one additional comment.
Yes, Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I I think we're also forgetting that uh that this is public's access to the waterfront and and that that was one of the major points uh of having this uh green space uh on the waterfront. When when you look around our city, even though we're waterfront community, there are not a lot of places in in our city where the public can gather uh and have a waterfront view, uh have functions, uh especially in the downtown area. Uh tho- those spaces are extremely limited. Uh I'm all for uh uh development, but uh I think this piece was gonna be for the public's use, a public place uh to uh where people could interact and and just enjoy the view. Just wanted to make that point.
Well, thank you for making that point, sir, that is absolutely accurate and 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 I appreciate the uh reference, thank you. Mister, miss, Mr. Wright.
Next slide please. So the uh Crawford Street Roundabout, um also part of the Crawford Gateway Rehabilitation Strategy. Um this roundabout will have the Jubilation sta- statue from Willett Hall as centerpiece. Um it'll involve a war feature with uplighting to enhance um the roundabout during the nighttime. The the lights will be similar to the lighting that are along the seawall, so they will be programmable um to convey holiday lighting. Similar to actually the the seawall and to actually Churchman Library right now. Um the Breeden Company is uh participating with financial contributions to this project for construction, designs at ninety percent and we're anticipated to start construction in the spring.
Go ahead sir. Oh, Mr. Moody, you have a question sir?
Yeah, my question is, is uh has Breeden already made that uh contribution?
I'm just aware of the agreement, I don't know if the city has those funds at hand.
We'll get the answer to that question, Mr. Moody, uh Mr. Battle, I I see your answer.
They mentioned to us in the last meeting that they contributed a hundred and thousand dollars for a sign in the in that project.
Thank you sir for that update. Mr. Whiter, Councilmember Whiter, you have the floor sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um pertaining to this project, would this be something that'd be operating around the clock? Or it's gonna be something that's just gonna be, you know, presented to us and then, you know, working or in operation half the times? I mean, sometimes we get fountains, you know, um I I think we hear some between some of our intersections whatnot and you you see them on and sometimes you see them off. So uh you know, who what's the plan with this, who's controlling this uh throughout the city?
Um the fountain and the lights will both be programmable, so as long as the there are no issues with the power um that is supplying those, it'll be operate, so everything will be on a on a timer. Um the parameters of of the actual operation have not been set yet. Um so that's that's that'll come out in the in the final design. Um as far as fountains at other locations, could you, I guess, elaborate so that I can provide a better answer for those?
Oh, I'll just take the information that was given, thank you sir.
Thank you sir. Please continue.
Um next slide. So the dog park at Washington and County um is an extension for Crawford Gateway Rehabilitation Strategy. Um site is approximately um point one four acres. Um it's gonna be um a pocket dog park. Um it'll provide a much-needed amenity for pet owners at the multiple apartment complexes in the area. There's on on-street parking available for those who are not within walking distance. Um it'll have green space that will include benches, trees, water source, pet waste stations and appropriate fencing. It is uh received approval from the Historic Preservation Committee and the design is at ninety percent.
Please continue.
Um next slide. So Sportsplex, um eighteen oh one Porser Boulevard. Um the site is approximately um twenty-eight acres. Um the gymnasium parcel, which is the parcel, um as you're coming into that, the former main entrance is to the left, um it's approximately just over fifteen acres. Uh the remaining parcel that houses the, currently houses the pool and the uh the dormitory building is just under twelve and a half acres. It's the uh old Frederick Military Academy or the Pines for just reference was purchased by the city in fiscal year twenty fifteen. There have been multiple completed project renovations out there, um. There have been multiple completed project renovations out there, um, multiple building demolitions, uh, removal of perimeter fencing. The old dormitory is currently under contract for demolition. There's been, uh, utility upgrades to that parcel land with the gymnasium, um, structural repairs and renovations for the gym, a multi-purpose athletic field, storm management facilities, and new parking to include parking for buses. Um, there are several pending enhancements and what you see here is the, uh, perimeter, uh, landscaping plan and some of the landscaping around the gym. Um, that is currently under contract, um, to be completed by April thirty. Um, there are plans to, to relocate the cooperative extension out of a, a building that's causing a drain on the city budget and putting in that back corner near the neighborhood, uh, where the former classroom building was demolished. And, um, as council, um, indicated, or what the former council indicated, their wishes were.
Think council needs to, um, look at this from a more strategic standpoint, uh, from us looking at our overall recreational, uh, facilities in the city and how this fits within. Um, because, you know, that, that's, gymnasium is an old building and we really need to look more strategically at upgrading that complex into something more state-of-the-art that we can use to attract, uh, athletic events. Just like, um, Vice Mayor Barnes was talking about yesterday with the football field. So I, I think we need to allow this process to sort of slow down and let's get it from a strategic standpoint, putting a plan together and how this fits within an overall recreational for our whole city in- instead of doing it a piecemeal on an old sports building. And, and now you're talking about putting another building, another older building up there. I, I think we really need to look at that as a new council.
Well, Dr. Whitaker, um, first of all, thank you for those comments and, and I would agree with that approach. I think as we look forward, um, and I would agree also with the fact that what council or Vice Mayor Barnes has stated in the past, our community deserves a state-of-the-art recreation facility and complex. And I think we should all agree that it's in our best interest to head that way. I would just ask that let's, let's do that. Let's, let's, let's ask the manager to put together a more comprehensive, uh, discussion in another work session that we can talk this through and we can come up with a strategy. Uh, and of course, it will, will, will ultimately include a lot of public engagement, but I think that's the best course. And if our colleagues on council will agree, we'll move that discussion forward.
Right.
Yeah.
So this, so this relocation, this relocation of a cooperative extension, what, what is that?
So the cooperative extension is currently in a, in a building off of Utah Street that needs significant, um, repairs. Um, based on the size of the staffs that's there and the, the services that they provide, um, they can be put in a smaller, um, prefab building in the back corner and still provide the same level of service to the community and also, um, provide those, those services they're providing now with less of a drain on city budgets.
Mayor.
Uh, uh, Councilwoman Lucas Burke.
Yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Uh, thank you. Um, I am in agreement with a state-of-the-art building. I hope that when we consider some new plans, that we would also consider an aquatic center. I think that Portsmouth might be one of the only centers, uh, cities, uh, without an aquatic center. And I think that that would be a great space, uh, for that to be, uh, utilized there, especially considering, um, African-American, um, children. Um, and, and adults, uh, are those who are more, uh, likely to not have opportunities to learn to swim.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for those comments and Mr. Mr. Pace is taking that down as well. Are we okay with moving forward?
I have one thing, um.
Okay, uh, Vice, Vice Mayor Barnes, you have the floor, sir.
Um, I, I, I just wanna, you know, make the public aware and make the council aware of that. And when you look at, a lot of people just look at the opportunity for sports, but, you know, in Portsmouth, we need to find a new way to generate income. And having a state-of-the-art facility there and also, um, reimagining all of our recreational facilities that, um, the department in general comes to support. It is definitely, um, a way to generate new income for our city and, and which they're desperate need of that new income. Um, as somebody who's been in the, the realm and has children and, and that realm, I see the, um, the, the financial benefit that it can do for cities. Um, uh, the, the restaurants, the, the hotel that we do have, I think it'll be a great benefit if we make a, 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 an investment in these things. So I'm looking forward to hearing that presentation when, um, um, our city manager comes back. But I, I just want to make people aware that this is a, a financial investment because it will ret- make a big return for our city and help us with, um, funding, education, or lowering taxes, or making sure that we can, um, put things in place for our citizens and put programs in place for our citizens.
Thank you, sir. Mister, Mister, um, Wright.
So, um, not on the slides, um, just as a general update, the Visitors and Information, uh, Center that is at the, at the north, um, inlet near the, near the ferry landing. Uh, we just completed the relocate, the renovation of the first floor, um, space in the former Sports Hall of Fame. The former gift shop has been renovated and tho- those folks will be relocated, um, shortly. The, the renovation project is complete.
Thank you, sir.
Um, next slide. So this is just a snapshot and slide of, um, just a general update of development, um, trends in the city currently. Um, and for as far as single-family residential applications, so those are individuals coming in to basically get permits to, to build single-family homes. Those, uh, applications come into the fourth floor. Um, they interact with the zoning department, engineering department, and the building department. Um, we've seen a spike even though we're in a pandemic. Um, not all necessarily related to large subdivisions. A lo- so the majority of the work is, is infill development. You have a lot of, uh, good, good builders that are, that are doing good work in the city. And so we've gone from one hundred and one applications last, uh, in 2019 to one hundred and ninety-five applications, um, in 2020. Um, a, a pretty high approval wa- rate. Um, as far as those that are returned, um, the, the, the major reason, at least in 2020, that those applications were returned is those are actually related to some of those newer subdivisions that are coming in. Um, if the subdivision has not been, um, inspected to the point where we can say that they have city sewer more available, um, you have, um, good streets in there. Um, you cannot move forward with getting, getting your permit since, uh, um, return is a bit misleading or basically on hold until those processes, we get those things inspected and signed off on and get those people moved. So, um, what you see here is, uh, the, the average review time without outliers has actually gone down. So once you get your zoning clearance and you submit your permits, basically, so you can get your permits from our department, from the building department, it's a four-day turnaround from staff. Then you can come in and start getting your permits and get moving. Um, as far as site plans, um, commercial development in the city, um, in 2020, you'll see here that we have thirty-six projects. That's basically double, um, the prior year as well. Um, average review time for the first submittal is thirty days, um, twenty-five days for second submittal, and then it continues to decrease as they go through the process. Um, we would hope and then try to get most, uh, people to get in and approve, uh, on the second submittal. Um, hasn't been the case, um, with people being able to respond to comments and get those plans through the process. Um, that review is coordinated through the engineering department and it involves, um, every city department that needs to look at, um, those development plans from planning to zoning, to building, to utilities, to fire department, to public works. Um, all those comments are compiled and given in one letter, um, to the developer's engineer. Um, they respond and get back to us. Um, one thing you don't see on the slide is far as average re- review times for, um, other localities. We're basically right in with all the other localities as far as, um, average review time. So you're looking at just general average calendar days just for a specific review. You look at Chesapeake, twenty-one days, Virginia Beach, twenty-one days, Portsmouth, twenty-six days, Newport News, twenty-eight days, Norfolk, twenty-eight days, Hampton, thirty, Suffolk, thirty. Was that all?
Or a holdup or, um, any of those, uh, issues according, um, relate to the zoning rewrite?
No, because once you get into the SFR process, you've already have a zoning clearance. So there are issues outside of the zoning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next slide. Oh, sorry, mayor.
Go, go, go ahead, Mr. Wright. Go ahead. You have.
Yeah, um, just this last slide, um, just looking.
Come on, come on.
Look, looking back through, through, over the past, uh, decade, um, and, and looking at the work that, um, the team here in engineering, um, along with the planning department and all the other departments that support us and our consultants, we've been able, able to obtain, um, in various grants and, and other types of funding, eighty million dollars from other sources, um, for our projects for the city, whether they be transportation improvements, stormwater projects, and residency projects. And so just wanted to highlight that, uh, to close.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Wright, for your presentation. Are you done, sir? I'm sorry. I can't see you. Mr. Wright?
Yes, sir. That was the last.
Done, sir?
Yes, sir, that was the last slide.
Mayor, mayor, hey. I'm good. Your mic off. Your mic is off.
Do you have a question, Councilmember?
Oh, yes, I got a question for Wright. Uh, Mr. Wright, hey, how you doing? Um, I, I, I saw the numbers from 2019 and 2022 for the single-family home, uh, development. Uh, was that spike due to bigger companies or was it inde- independent, uh, um, small builders, companies?
Um, for the majority, um, up until probably mid-year, it was smaller companies. But, um, once mid-year hit and then, uh, the Newport subdivision got their approvals, they started to come in with, um, their plans. But, um, even before that, we were trending to be above last year's averages without Newport.
You was trending in 2020, I mean, 2019? Is that what you were saying? Or you was twenty, I mean, 2020?
Twenty twenty, we would have, we would have, even without Newport, we would have been above, we wouldn't have been double, but we would have been, been either close to or above last year's. And in fact, mid-year, um, May, before Newport really geared up, we were already outpacing last year for single-family homes. That was just with your individual builders that are building on infill lots and not Newport.
So I, I, I got a question, um. Were this, were the same ordinance and, uh, parameters in place for building? Uh, because some things changed and I was just trying to figure out, um, what timeframe was that? Was that 2019? When the square footage of building on the lot changed?
Um, I think you're referring to the zoning and my department doesn't deal with zoning.
Okay. All right.
Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Wright.
Yes, Councilmember Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Wright, uh, what, what's the latest on the Hodges Manor development that was, uh, uh, having some issues with the Norfolk, uh, water line easement? I think Coastal was doing that, uh, a- any development? Is that project gonna move forward?
Um, they're, I wanna say they're in the final home stretch with Norfolk. They've had an approved site plan from us from, for some time. Um, they're, uh, dealing with the last of the issues, uh, with Norfolk and their, and the easement for their raw water main.
So their issues are with, uh, Norfolk, uh, uh, not, not Portsmouth, correct?
Um, the majority of the issues related to that development, and if you're specifically referring to timeframes, would be related to them being able to work with Norfolk and to come to some sort of agreement with how they're going on to work and access the easement, correct?
And second, uh, question, the Ryan Home Development, uh, um, A- Afton, uh, uh, Green Development. And the, uh, what, what's the timetable there? You th- you think any of us will, uh, live long enough to see a, a, a home actually being constructed there?
They are getting close to their subdivision final, I would say, here within the next probably two weeks where we do the subdivision final, as I indicated, uh, loosely. Um, that, that basically is us certified that they have active water and sewer, streets and things like that are in and that they can go ahead and start pulling permits for the homes.
And, and the number of homes, the, the project is still, uh, as it was presented?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Uh, does that conclude your, your presentation, sir?
Yes, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the, the comprehensive information. Um, to my colleagues, I, I, I need to share with you that, that, that we're running short on time and, and in the interest of time, I want to make sure that we get in, um, our closed, closed meeting, uh, to discuss boards and commissions. Um, and we will, um, have the city attorney introductions at a later time. So if we could move forward with, um, we do have a closed session and is there a motion to move into a closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have the, have the motion. I move to, I move to go into a closed, uh, meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Subsections two-point-two dash thirty-seven oh eight point two, eight point three, and two-point-two dash thirty-seven eleven, eight point one, and City Council Ordinance twenty-twenty-twenty-one for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates for, and appointees to boards and commissions.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Battle. Excuse me, Mr. Barnes, I'm sorry.
You're fine. Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes, we're in close. Uh, to come out of, I'm out of clothes, one second?
Yes, I, I have, I move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk? Can you please? Madam Clerk, you please call the roll?
Yes, sir, Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Wooder?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Thank you.